So I'd like to call this meeting of the Virgin City Council to order July 18th, 2017, at 5:30 PM. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we're in number one of the agenda, and any amendments to the agenda? There is one amendment to the agenda that I'm aware of, and we would be adding five "I" to the agenda, which is an outside alcohol consumption permit for the American Legion, post 14, August 13th.
And then five "I," the other five "I" would become five, seven "J"? See what that is? Like, I got two, I got an unnumbered, the business continued right here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
See where it says "I"?
Yeah.
That's because...
Oh, I didn't see that. I didn't pay attention to that, sorry. It should be...
And that's okay.
J, then?
That will be, that will become "J."
J.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Visitors, we have no scheduled visitors, so we go to approval of the June 27th meeting of the City Council.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of June 27th.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments about the minutes or changes? Yes?
I have one correction to make on page two regarding the V-Trans small scale. About midway, many young pedestrians headed to the elementary school and swimming pool relies, should be rely.
Spell check, said relies.
Well, it lied.
So, actually, I have a few. In the first, on the first page, where it says "Visitors," it says on the first line, Economic Development Committee of The Virgin's Partnership. And then if you go down to the next line, which starts, "They have been instrumental," again, it's adding a whole bunch of these, "with help from The Addison County Economic Development Corporation." And then we go down to where it says, the Senate is ending in 15,000 from the city. The next Senate should be The Virgin's Partnership. And then, this is a hard one, another two lines down, it begins, "Live here and has improved business relationships," and, let's see, "She shared statistics," the word "she." And those are the ones that I have. Anything else? Any other amendments?
One more thing. Under attendance, Mark Bellinger was also here. He was the, he was the UGC rep for the Addison County...
Who was it?
Mark Bellinger.
Okay. Any other changes? So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll state, I have no idea if they were right or not.
All right. Citizens' comments. We have a couple of citizens in the audience there, and do you have any comments on something that is not on the agenda?
Just a couple of points of curiosity. You alluded to it briefly.
And we talked about this the last meeting that I attended, has to do with delinquent sewer and property tax collections. Question was and continues to be, what progress has been made in reducing these two numbers?
So, first off, relative to sewer, there is a, there's billings that occur all the time, and I did bring a delinquent tax report, I'll talk about that in a second, but I will tell you, in the case of sewers, there are, there are a number of properties that, in town, that have delinquent sewers, but yet are absolutely current in their property taxes.
That's on my list.
Yeah, and that is because, more than likely, in those instances, if not exclusively, it's because their taxes are paid through an escrow service, and so their taxes are kept current. However, their sewers are in arrears. I can tell you that since the last time you came here, I know one account, Joan, that was about five years behind, has been paid in full.
For sure, yes.
Yep, that one account comes to mind. So that would be, that amount would be in the vicinity of $2,200 or $2,300. In that, that's been paid in full. So what I don't know, Robert, is, would be...
My mother calls me Robert.
When she passed.
You know, so the point is, I can tell, I can tell you, I, that if somebody owes more than three years, they are, you know, they're going to be threatened with a property tax sale. That is our methodology for collection. You know, some municipalities use filing liens, it really is a waste of filing papers. We're not in the water business, but you can, you can have water shut off as a means of collecting taxes. That's something that I'm not interested in doing at all, lots of reasons. One of the reasons is, there could be kids living in a home, and the phrase I say on many occasions, Joan, sick of listening to me saying that, is that I'm not the type of person that punishes kids for having bad parents, and so I would never think of having the water shut off at a residence, you know, particularly if there's, if there's children there. So we use the same process for delinquent sewers as we would for tax sales. And so there'd be a public notification, mortgage companies are notified, and typically, if there is a mortgage company, a property owner is in default of their mortgage for non-payment of their sewer. So when that notice goes to the newspaper and goes to mortgage companies, it's a very successful task. Now, there's an expense involved in doing that, and some people, they do just get behind, all right? So there, there are people that get behind a little bit, and they may be on some payment plan, but if somebody is clearly just throwing away the notices, when it gets to three years, you know, we will move forward with a tax sale. So that's the, that's the sewer side of things. The property tax side, it works, it's similar, but I can tell you, we don't wait three years necessarily, and I can tell you that this report that I handed out to everyone shows the delinquents that we have from all years, and you can see that there still is a little bit of tax left in 2012, and that particular property, one of the things that happened with a piece of property, doesn't happen very often, but it was where somebody actually swapped out their mobile home, and the new mobile home uniform bill of sale didn't get recorded at City Hall, and so we started a tax sale procedure against a mobile home that wasn't here any longer. We got that corrected, and so now we know really what that mobile home is, and so the 2012, 2013, I believe, is a single property owner, and the list, there may be a couple in 2014, just a handful in 15. But I will tell you that when I get around, I'm going to, I don't want to repeat myself, when I get around to talking about fund balance projection, I'm going to talk again about delinquent property taxes.
The reason I brought that up is because there's a, the comment was made by one among you in the Addison Independent regarding sewer billing. The preference to raise the sewer tax a couple of cents a year rather than a one-shot deal of 10 cents would be more palatable, and my question is, two questions. Number one, tax increase should be a need-based function, not something that's built into the system. I mean, that's like, that's like making donations to entities as an automatic function regardless of that entity's need, and we, we know what that's all about. The other thing is that the billing cycle for sewers has no provisions, nor was any mentioned in this article. Not sure that it's even being entertained, but the Water Department provides a senior's As the amount of usage goes down, they recognize that decrease in usage and charge less. Has nothing to do with the minimum 6,000 gallons per month, 18,000 per quarter. It has strictly to do with usage overall. My question to you all is, why isn't that same consideration applied to the sewer bill as opposed to, let's just raise it a couple of cents every year, just because we can?
Does anybody want to tackle that?
I mean, I can tackle it. You know, the relative to, relative to sewer charges, there's a state law on how sewer can be charged by a municipality, and you'd be a little, I think you'd be surprised if you read that statute, Rob, Bob, about, Bob, about, about the legal alternatives for charging sewer. You could actually charge sewer based on the value of your property, all right? So if you want to start talking about unfairness, somebody could, you know, have a $600,000 home, and they pay sewer based on the value of your home, and somebody, you know, lives in $120,000 and paying sewer, and so I will tell you that the statute that governs, governs legal ways to charge sewer, there is, you know, a whole variety of unfair ways to, to charge. I will tell you that in the, in the water business, everybody should have a meter, and therefore, there is this, the Water District, there's this base charge of 6,000 gallons a month, I believe, and then there is an overage based on metered usage. And in their business, because it's metered, in essence, if the meter's working properly, you are consuming exactly what that meter says. Relative to sewer, it doesn't work that way. I mean, I'm out watering my flowers, I mean, there's a, one wash in my car, not all of my water goes down the sewer. So there's some people who, who don't have a garden, don't wash their car, all right? So all of their water is going, that they use is going into the sewer, whereas there's other properties whereby a lot of their water that they're using is not going down the sewer. And so if you had a, an absolute consumption-based sewer charge based on water meter readings, there is a degree of unfairness involved with that, all right? So it's really a way of, if we can have a sewer billing system that treats everybody equally unfairly, does that sound, sound okay? All right? I think that it works. Now, keep in mind that I, I don't want to, I would prefer, not to talk a lot about age-based billing, I can tell you, I would shrug with that. I don't know about how municipalities can justify aged, age-based billing, and then, and let me just stop there. I'm not in the, the Water District can do whatever it wants to do. I'm puzzled about age, purely aged-based billing by a municipality. But I will tell you that, at the end of the day, we need $640,000, and if you move the rates, it works like a balloon. You can push it out here, and something's got to give, all right? And so that's why, a few years ago, we had a unit based on everything, and now we have this gallonage charge. So if any business uses more than 6,000 gallons, they're billed an overage monthly. In addition to that, in the case of Northland's Job Corps, we actually monitor their pump station, and if we compare the water meter reading to the flow meter that's coming out of the pump station that only serves that facility, and we bill them the greater of the two numbers. So there, we aren't totally unit-based, we're a combination unit-based and, and measured user. It's a combination.
Well, I understood that there probably was some hidden complexity that prevented the, 90% of the water that comes into the property goes out in the sewer system. I mean, that, that would be a reasonable assumption. I think it would be a defensible position that 10% is used for watering lawns, cars, drinking, whatever, but without any support from the state, apparently, the city would run afoul of some ordinance, some statute, somewhere, if it attempted to more fairly charge sewage in, in the form of usage, gallonage. Since we don't have meters on the, on the individual houses or usage facilities like we do for water, there would have to be some other way to do it, some other defensible position, but if it's in contrary to, if it's contrary to what the state ordinance is, then it, I guess we would probably be spinning our wheels trying to enact some form of level loading on the sewer side like we do on the water side.
See, I can tell you, I can tell you, Bob, on the water side, I'm going to say that it's real simple. If your meter is working properly, you, you are being billed, they have a base down there, and the Water District could, they could have all kinds of discussion about whether or not the base should be 4,000, or 6,000, or 12,000, or whatever. You can have a lot of discussion about that base, but it does take a certain amount of money to run the infrastructure. So that's, that, there is, it's discretionary about what that so-called base is. But at the Water District, they have a base, and then there's overage, and like I say, you have a meter, and you're, you're using water, and you're measuring water. I don't think that there really, I'm going to say that there really isn't any unfairness at the Water District as it relates to their consumption-based rates. On the sewer side, I could, I could tell stories all night long about variables. I'll give you another one. Some people has a garbage disposal, and somebody else brings all of their compostables out to their compost pile. And I can tell you that a garbage disposal sending all of their biosolids down to the wastewater treatment plant is way more of a burden than the gallons of, of coming through their water. So I'm just telling you that it, it becomes very complicated and scenario after scenario, and so the only thing that we've done, we used to be totally unit-based. It's like if you had a beauty salon, for example, you were charged triple unit, okay? That was the way they used to do it, something like that, Joan, right? Triple unit. Well, that means if you're a one-person beauty salon, you were triple unit, and if you had 15 hairdressers, you were triple unit. That didn't sound very fair to us, so that's why we went with this base and overage to bring some, get rid of some of those clear inequities. Now, if there's other inequities out there, you know, we, you know, that's what the Council's job is, is to, is to look at those inequities and, and adjust as they see appropriate.
I've always found the water-based billing system to be absolutely spot-on, fair. You pay for what you use, pretty basic, and it was, we used to pay one mil per gallon when I moved up here. 25,500 gallons per quarter, Joan remembers, we all remember, and the bill was $25.50 per quarter, one tenth of a cent per gallon. That all got adjusted absolutely fairly, and my only question, the basis for my question tonight is, can that same type of equity be applied to the sewage system? And if you don't ask, you're never going to find out. That's why I'm asking. And the answer is yes, but it's incredibly, it's more complicated than you really want to get into because of all the variances and excluding the legal complexities. Those aside, the other complexities make it way more cumbersome, and cumbersome meaning costly. Somebody would have to keep track of all that stuff, and somebody else is going to pay for it.
Costly, and it almost is like spending a dollar to chase a nickel.
Simple as that. Well, that's why I asked a question.
Okay.
Now I know.
Thank you.
I want to just circle back on warrants. I know you said minutes and didn't, just wanted to just make a remark about warrants. As I mentioned in my email, there's two sets of warrants out here, and I'm, I've gone through these things, it's a, it's a little bit of a pain to split all of this out from one year to the next, because all it does is affect our cash, but there are two sets, and just so that you know, at the next meeting in, that you have in August, there still might be, I never know, you know, somebody's holding on to a May bill, all right? So we may not be totally done that, but we think that we've got every bill, so that, it might happen one more meeting, but if not, we'll be back to having just one warrant.
Okay, we'll move along. Any disclosures to be made by anyone regarding conflicts or potential conflicts of interest?
Rennie, at our last meeting, prior to our discussion about the Addison County Economic Development Corporation, I neglected to disclose that I'm on that board and that I represent the city, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, thank you. I don't, I don't think there was any conflict, but...
Neither do I, thank you.
It's good for, you know, people to know that there's, that there's a connection. Okay, we'll go to regular business. Five A, appointment of planning commission members, and we have, I think you've got it in your packet, the list of planning commission members. There are four whose term ends in August. Two of them, Jason Farrell and Morgan Kittredge, do not want to be reappointed, and that, that won't become a problem. Planning Board, or Planning Commissions are supposed to have someplace between three and nine members, so even with the two members missing, we still have five, so we are still legal. And the Planning Commission Chair will be advertising for people that have an interest in going on there, and they'll go through a process of recommending to the City Council who to appoint at a later date. So the two that need to be reappointed, it's for a two-year term expiring in August, August 1st, I believe, of 2019, are Michael Winslow and Timothy Cook. So I would need a motion to reappoint, or appoint, whichever way you want to say it, these two individuals to the Planning Commission.
I will make said motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any comments? I'll just make one comment about Jason Farrell. I don't know how long Mortgage, Morgan has been on the Planning Commission, but Jason has been on the Planning Commission for 10 years. And also, I think that he fill-in for you as...
I had my knees replaced, yes he did.
That's right, as administrator, as a zoning administrator. So he has really, he has really done a lot for us, and he's still going to be on the Development, Development Review Board, but he just doesn't want to continue on the Planning Commission. So with that, if there are no other comments, all those in favor of these appointees, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. So then we'll move on to appointment of planning, the Development Review Board members, and there are four regular members who, whose terms are expiring in August, and Lowell as the alternate. I don't know whether anybody's asked you whether he wanted to continue to be alternate. Is that okay?
My uncle.
Oh, he did? Okay, good. So the, the people who need to be reappointed or appointed, whichever way you look at it, Brent Rakowski, Jason Farrell, Don Peabody, Steve Rappaport, and Lowell Bertrand as the alternative, alternate, sorry. So I would need a motion to appoint these folks for a two-year term ending August 1st, 2019.
I'll make said motion.
The motion has been made.
I'll second it.
And seconded. Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we move on. All right, appointment of city manager and set compensation. We will be doing the appointment of the city manager and the city clerk, which is next, but we will be holding off the review and compensation till the August 8th meeting. That, the compensation is retroactive, so it has no effect on them, the fact that we are delaying it to another meeting. So I would entertain a motion to appoint the city manager as, Mel Hawley, as the city manager.
I will make said motion.
The motion has been made.
I'll second it.
And seconded.
Is this like a three or four-year term?
This is, well, we have to...
I thought we said a ten-year term.
Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we move on to appointment of the city clerk treasurer, and I already went over the compensation issue, so I need a motion from someone to appoint Joan as the city clerk treasurer.
I'll make said motion.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've done that. Appointment of city attorney. The current city attorney is Jim Womet, and I'll need a motion to appoint the firm of Womet and Runsey as the city attorneys, or the city attorney firm.
I'll make said motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we've got that one done. Capital Improvement Special Funds Records Computerization Fund, and that one, I'll turn at least initially over to Mel.
So I, as I mentioned to Rennie earlier in the day, because of our agenda, and you have a public hearing at 6:30, I wanted us to really take our time in reviewing the, in reviewing this report, as I have some, some action items that I would recommend to you. So first off, let me just tell you that it is my understanding that reserve funds that are sewer-related are treated differently by law as a municipal utility. It is my understanding that the, the City Council does have the right to create capital funds, sewer line funds, capital improvement funds, biosolids funds. I believe that you have that right without voter approval because it is a municipal utility, and so I just wanted to remark on that, and there, there is no current policy behind those three funds other than the title. Now, I will tell you that the biosolids fund, any expense related to handling the biosolids from the lagoons and from the digester, and what I mean by any expense is, I'm talking about any testing that occurs of that sludge throughout the year, any engineering involved prior to any land application, and when the biosolids are disposed of either by land application or some other method, it, all of those expenses are charged to the biosolids fund. So there's an annual appropriation, which has been $50,000 a year. This year, I believe the budget has dropped that to 40, and that's because we're confident that we have enough money, and, and we are confident that we are able to, we will be able to get rid of the solids at roughly a 50, a $40,000 per year cost. Sewer line replacement, I can tell you... Sewer line replacement, I can tell you, we, that number, I'm not sure what the new budget is. I think it's not very much, 20 or 20,000 or so. It's, I know that it's not very much. And again, when we are, if we're doing, putting a camera down a line or some line gets clogged and we have to go out and dig it and fix it, that comes out of the regular budget. But if we are replacing any section of our mains, that kind of expense is taken out of this fund. And as you can see, $30,000, that's what we had pre-audit on, on June 30. So there is another 20,000 or so that are going into that. But that's really not very much money in the, in the sewer fund for sewer lines, just, just so you know. Sewer capital improvements. I have kind of a general rule. If there's some kind of equipment at the wastewater treatment plant that's going to be replaced, let's say that there's a chemical feed pump, $1,000 chemical feed pump, that's got to be replaced. So it's really about equipment replacement. It's about major expenses at the plant. You know, as soon as I say, I don't think that there's anything down there that we need to worry about today, I'll get, I'll get an email in the morning. But, but anyway, I think that in the new budget, I have not allocated putting any additional money into the capital, sewer capital improvement. But I will say that based on a council motion, a couple of years ago, I think it was, all sewer connection fees, the $1,340 that once went to biosolids now are directed to the sewer capital improvement fund. So for instance, when, if you take Claybrook, the Commodore, Commodore Drive Development, 50 units, you know, every one of those houses pays a $1,340 connection fee. And so there is, you know, a development of that scale. You know, there's a fair, a sizable amount of money that will be going into that fund as that, as those 50 units are developed. So that's what I've got on Fund Eight. Moving on to Fund Nine, the Fire Department Vehicle Replacement Fund. It's, to my knowledge, that has never been approved by the voters, probably should have been approved by the voters. And let me just tell you where that money comes from is when we typically buy a truck and when we buy a new truck, we end up selling the old one and the money just gets dumped in that Fire Department Vehicle Replacement Fund. There was a time when the budget, we used to put 10 or 15,000 dollars a year into a fire truck replacement fund, thinking that you could actually buy a fire truck, alright? Well, anyway, fire trucks, they cost $525,000 is what the, what the cost is for a new frontline pumper. So that $10,823 isn't going to go too far. But I will tell you that by all rights, we, we, that, that amount, that replacement fund, to my knowledge, has never, never been approved by the voters. And, you know, maybe it should just be put back into the cash account of the Fire Department and, and call it a day. And so I do have, there is some motivation to what I'm telling you today. And I'm not, I, I'm not, when I say it's my recommendation to move the $10,823.24 to the, back to the Fire Department General Fund. That's where the money was acquired. It just goes into the fund balance. It's not, not like we're not going to, it's not like a statement that we're not going to put money into our trucks. But I'd like to have that number become zero on June 30th, that, for that one. The Water Tower Reserve Fund, that's how much money we have in it, that 236. You have a policy in place. The voters have approved both the Water Tower Reserve Fund and the Continuation Fund. The $60,000 is in the Police Department budget and that will get transferred over at some point during this current fiscal year. So some of that, I do have a different, a separate report that I do provide you from time to time that shows you your allocations. Because we have allocated 10% of the sidewalk, the Main Street sidewalk project. So there is $30,500 that's been allocated. We've allocated 7,500 to the Virgin's Partnership. Help me out here, folks. Is there any, is there anybody else's memory? Is there anything else that we have allocated? Ah, nope, that's, that's a different fund. That's watershed, I'm on water tower.
We have tentatively
Oh, the small scale, the beacon, pedestrian beacon, you allocated, you allocated 75, you allocated 15,000.
It was 50% of the 75,000.
37.5, 30, whatever the minutes said, 37.5. So in essence, you, and I, there's a report that I've done for you and I should do that periodically so that you don't think you have 236. You actually have 236 minus prior allocations, okay? We're still collecting 100 Gs, alright? We're, you know, we still have, there's still four companies on the tower, three major companies, and then one minor company, which is VTEL, I think, right Joan? There's a small little deal that we have with, with VTEL. So those are all, have the 5 and 6% escalators. So if there is 100,000, it comes in. I believe the continuation is 25%, goes into the continuation fund. So that will grow by, by $75,000, expected to grow by $75,000 in the coming year. Tree planting reserve. I remember sending you all a memo back in May and I told you that I was going to go plant some trees before June 30. I did not plant any trees. So I would recommend that that tree planting reserve, that 2,146.70, get closed out and go back to the General Fund. The reappraisal reserve fund, that does not require voter approval. And the reason is because the state of Vermont sends us this money. They send us a certain dollar per cap, per parcel per year, Joan. I can't remember exactly what it is. What do we get a year?
Six dollars a parcel.
Six dollars a parcel. So you got, we got around 1,000 parcels, so we get about $6,000 a year. And that's accumulated to $72,000. And, and obviously, at some point, the city will need to go through reappraisal. And I feel confident that when you do, you'll have enough money to, to pay that bill. I suspect that when, when you do undertake that project, it'll, it'll cost you 90 to 100,000 dollars and, and probably in another four years. Your last one was in 2007. So here we are, 11 years. Oh, we will quickly be 11 years beyond. So I, I think when you get towards 15 years, you, that's a long time to not have a professional walking through somebody's home. So that would, so there's no action required there. The West Main Street improvements, Rennie knows this one far better than me. But when the city rebuilt West Main Street under the force account, quick, quick way to do something, there was a requirement that the city fund a pavement, you know, paving to maintain that road. We were required to keep money in reserve. And if you run the math, $62,000 will pave that entire road. So we haven't allocated any new money into that account for, for as long as I've worked, came back to work here. So, but anyway, that, that West, West Main is, that fund must remain. It's in accordance with an agreement that we signed with the state of Vermont. If, if at some point, I will tell you that periodically, you should take a look at how mu, the West Main Street length and, and run a calculation of what it would cost to, to put an inch and a half of pavement over that road, just so you know. It's, it's actually something I can do for you. And so that you, now if you're talking about grinding and, you know, a big, major project, and I will tell you that West Main Street, for those of you that travel it, it's, it's, it's rolly, okay? So I, I wouldn't wait too many years before seriously looking at West Main Street before you end up with, you know, a lot more expense, you know?
Yeah. With that, with that project, the state was going to do it as a state project. And the cost was extraordinary. And so the city talked him into, and with some political stuff going on. Also, to allow the city to be its own general contractor, basically, and handle how it would be done. And there were a certain amount of agreements that the city had to agree to, one of which is creating this fund so that it would be properly maintained. But that cut the cost of doing the project in half. So it's, it was a big change.
It's a road that's been great. I mean, it's, pavement doesn't break apart. It's been really good considering all the weight that's been on that road. Did a good job.
Yes.
Just a real quick follow on to what the young lady just said. There was movement afoot regarding truck traffic. Vermont AOT and northbound versus southbound rerouting. Where is that, or is it anymore at this point?
Well, it's still, it's still ruminating around in various corridors. And probably it'll raise its head at some point, but not at the moment.
Oh, it's, it's backburnered, in other words. It's, it's still active, but not that active?
Not that active.
Fine, thank you.
So that's it on West, West Main. And I'll, I'll try to run a little calculation for you. So at least you know what the paving cost would be to resurface all of West Main Street with that fund. Pump house restoration, I would recommend that that $436.46 revert to the General Fund. And again, I'm not saying that's because I, I don't want to put money into the pump house. I just want, my, my motivation is to close this account out effective June 30th. And, you know, we have an obligation to maintain the pump house regardless of whether or not we got $436 or not. So it's really an accounting issue there. Records restoration fees, that is derived, that is statutorily driven. Every page that is recorded in the clerk's office is charged $10 a page. And by statute, $1 must be deposited into a records restoration fees fund. And what Joan does is she periodically restores books. And so I'm not really sure, Joan, where we are at. I know that we've sent a lot of our land record books to the restoration camp and they come back and beautifully done. And so I think, Joan, my, my, I don't have any, my only recommendation would be for you, Joan, to spend that money. That, that's not, you know, restoring books, I'd rather restore the books than have $29,000 in the bank. So I think that you need to pick a few books and keep moving along with that project there. Lister Education Fund, the state of Vermont sends us some money. They used to just automatically send it. Now they, now it's done on some kind of a grant basis. And I will, I will tell you that when I get done working here, I, before I came back as city manager, full-time city manager, I was an elected Lister and a, and the zoning administrator. And I still do zoning administration work for the Board of Listers. And I'm not at all trying to kick the three Listers out, but I actually do have a desire to learn our appraisal system. It's one of the things, it's okay, we hire Nemrick to come and do the field work and load it in. I mean, Ben is very, very efficient. And I, I think that, I can tell you that the Board of Listers, myself, Karen, I'm not a Lister, I'm an administrator, administrative assistant to them. But if you think of how we do things, me, Karen Quigley, Bill Pocket, and Chris Baer, we're all working, alright? We don't have time to go take courses to learn how to do something. But that's what that Lister education is, is for, is to go to seminars and learn, learn your trade, if you will. So that's, you don't, you don't have really anything to do with this. The money shows up and it can only be used for that purpose. Virgin's Recreation Events Fund. This is a fund that has never been given voter approval. And I can tell you that the Virgin's Recreation Events Fund is the result of consolidating about four other funds. When I came back to work here, there was a Holiday Stroll Fund and maybe a Farmer's Market Fund and a Virgin's Day Fund and a, you know, some other fund and some other fund. And every fund costs us money to
Halloween?
Okay, go with that, you know, Halloween fund, alright? So all of these funds, anytime that you separate funds, it costs money to audit them. So what we did is we combined them all into this one Virgin's Recreation Events Fund. And in theory, some events lose money and some events make money. And at the end of the day, you can see that we've made money, you know, throughout the years of, you know, Virgin's Day and, and this type of thing. So I think if
Some of that money that's in there on this year's donation
To
To the Virgin's Day.
To Virgin's Day, yes, yeah. And I think, I'm trying to think of what else we charge to that fund, Joan, because the fireworks, we pay out of the budget. The Memorial Day Parade, we pay out of the budget. I'm trying to think of what we use the money for. So anyway, if I can't think of what we use the money for, that tells you how, how you got $7,300. I can't think of how we, how we spent it. So I really think that, let me just tell you that if you have a recreation, a Virgin's Recreation Events Fund, which is about recreation, we ought to be using it for recreation. And it shouldn't be just sitting in a fund, because it's not providing any recreation sitting in, in a bank, alright? So
Could that be used in the pool?
I, I believe that it's, where there is no policy. I mean, Joan, we'd have to look a little bit to look at some of the ins and outs of that money.
Yeah, what's going on. Well, it used to be, when we had a recreation director, Tiara, and she used to charge people to come to, you know, Topps Dance and the music in the opera house and all that stuff. Those people paid for those events. So that's where it started, is because we had to have a fund for revenue to go in and out.
So it's one of those things, Lynn, that probably was crystal clear at one point. And then over time, we don't really know what it is. And I, I really think that there's, you know, if, you know, if we can't figure out the purpose, you either dump it back to the General Fund or you really figure out what the purpose of it and use it for some intended purpose.
Now, for Gen's Day though.
It does get used for that.
Gen's Day, right?
You know, we'll, we can, I'm trying to think of what we do do it. There was a time like we would allocate 3,000 into it, out of the General Fund and money would get spent out of it. So we'd have to provide you a little bit of research. I don't, I don't, I really don't know exactly what's going on there. So we'll, Joan, let me do a little research on it.
Well, yeah, we put money in there for Virgin's Day. That three, you're budgeted, you budgeted $3,000 for Virgin's Day?
Yeah.
That goes into there.
Yeah.
Sounds like we need it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it is needed, but, you know, it's a wonder like, do we, you know, is there excess money there? And what's the purpose of it? And it's not hurting, it's not hurting us than being there. But again, if there was some kind of event, that recreation event or swimming pool, it's clearly, clearly about recreation. I will, it's like, I can tell you, the fishing derby is self-supporting, okay? So, but if it wasn't self-supporting and you really wanted to do it, there's money there that could help, could, could help support it, so. Records computerization, what this is, this is a fund that I also do not believe has ever been approved by the voters. And it was instituted a long time ago, but Joan can give you the background. I talked to you about the dollar per page that goes into a fund for records restoration, which is statutorily driven. There is also $3 of the $10 that has been directed into a records computerization fund. And I believe Joan can, can expand on this, but it was Joan's fear, if you will, or, or projection or forecasting that at some point, the state of Vermont was going to mandate that our land records and, and such, and birth records and death records were all going to have to be electronically handled. And so if all of a sudden the state said, "Virgin's, you have until July 1, 2000, and such and such, to have all of your records digitized and accessible through, you know, electronically," alright? That, that's a, that's a project and it costs a ton of money. So I, but I don't know, I don't want to necessarily put Joan on the spot, but if I were to say like, "Joan, what are we doing with $55,000?" Alright? And so I, what I recommend, and I've, I've told Joan about this, I recommend that effective July 1, we no longer put $3 a page into I recommend that effective July 1, we no longer put $3 a page into the records computerization fund. And I can tell you that the budget reflects that, because the clerk fees budget for the new year goes from $17,500 to $22,250. Because I, I had confidence that I could sell this to the city council to no longer put the $3 a page, or I should say, I would like the city council to suspend putting $3 a page into this fund, retroactive to the 1st of July, and request Joan, that Joan provide you with some kind of a plan within some kind of a period of time, all right? I don't care, I don't care what those are, six months, a year, I don't know. But I just, I, I just, I'll be very honest with you. I do not like the city of Virgin's having $55,000 in a fund without a plan.
I, I think from a, from a time perspective, we're not going to be able to get through all of these funds.
They also go very, very quickly, Rennie.
Because, because I, we've got these other items that we need to get to. Because what I'd like to do is have the hearing, and if there's nothing to change in there, we're out of here.
Yeah. Okay, so, anyway, so, well, I've got a, Rennie, I think, hopefully you're keeping track of my, what are my, my recommendations, so that maybe there's one motion, Lowell, okay? Otter Creek Basin Fund, this is the money that Joan and Melissa goes down and gets out of the donation buckets. They've been down, what'd you get last time you were down there, Joan?
$200.
Yeah, so, it's, it continues to fall short of, of what I really suspected, expected to get down there. But anyway, it's $200 that we didn't have. So, that's what that money is. And frankly, I can't, I wish I knew what I spent the $99. You can see, we only took in $1,237 in a year. That's, seems low to me. But last year, if you remember, we had very little boat traffic. You know, the river was very low. And so, I think that the, the 12 was indicative of not having as many boats. But even when the water was high, there was only 15, 17, 1800 bucks. It's not, it's not a mountain of money. The Virgin's Burying Ground, what that is, that's a cemetery at the corner of School Street and Mountain View Lane. If you remember, we took over the fund from, the Congregational Church had that money. And that $20,000 came to the city. City council approved putting up the fence. We also put a new sign up there. So, that 6808, you know, that, it's never been approved by the voters, but you've got to follow how it got to us. It came to us from a, from another entity. And when we take it, we're obligated to use that money for its intended purpose. So, I don't, I don't have any plan for that money. But anyway, that's the story behind the money. John Donnelly Fund, that's driven by the, the will of John Donnelly. The Ray Davison Fund is driven by the will of Ray Davison. The Watershed, it started out with the $300,000, and the voters approved that to go to $350,000. And as you can see, the only, there's not a heck of a lot of available funds. And I believe that that expense right there, the $29,865.32, is the sum of all of your appropriations up until June 30th. I believe that you made three appropriations from that. There was a $9,000 appropriation to the pool. There was an $11,572 for the tennis courts. And there was $5,393.32 for the valve at the, at the pool. And you add those up. And so, those all got spent through June 30. So, there is, you have, just keep in mind that you did allocate $11,000 of the $11,188.85. You better root for the stock market. So, this, this thing really, it's, you know, I hate to use the word on fumes in the same sentence as $350,000, but you don't have any money today. You've, you've allocated that. So, so at 25 after 6, I'm hoping somebody can make a motion.
I think, I think what the motion might be is that the Fire Department Vehicle Replacement Fund, the tree planting reserve-
The fire department has to go back to the fire department. That's the only difference, Rennie.
Oh, so we can't do that now?
Sure.
Before we do this, is there a reason that it has to go into the general fund? Can, for instance, the $7,300 that's in recreation, could that go to the Water Tower Fund?
I'm not suggesting necessarily that the $7,300 go anywhere. I didn't say that, I didn't say that, but I, it could.
Well, what I'm saying is, you know, typical budgets, and this is, I'm just saying this in general. Once something goes into the general fund, it's used for something that was never intended to necessarily-
Well, it disappears.
Yeah, exactly. So, before we make any motions on this, I would like to know if there is a way of allocating this money into a specific thing that doesn't necessarily have to have a line account. But you're like, you're putting the 73 into the Water Tower Fund, or you're putting the, I'll just say, the water, the, the fire truck into something.
Yeah.
So that it's not necessarily spent on something other than what the original intention was.
Okay. So, so the fire department has to stay in the fire, it was derived from fire funds. And so, it has to stay in fire fu, the firefight.
I understand that, yeah.
That one's, the other ones, Lynn, I think that you could, you could conceivably. But if you're thinking of turning a fund into a multipurpose fund, then we're, I don't know that, I'm trying not to keep track, I have to keep track of that.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, if any money comes in for recreation, why don't we put it in the Water Tower Fund? So, it can be used for the pool, or it can be used for the tennis courts. Or, I mean, we took a lot of money out this year that obviously we had, that we could have used.
Well, what we could do is hold any action on this to the next meeting. I, I don't, I don't think there's any rush, because it's not going to take place until June 30th. So, that would give some time to kind of do some research as to how the uses may be done or allocated.
Yeah, I would be opposed to putting it into a general fund in, in theory.
Yeah, so, if, if the council agrees, we, we just hold this off to the next meeting. And that way, we'll have a little bit more chance to think about how the money can be used. Okay, so, we'll move on to the next thing. And that is zoning and subdivision permit fee structure. We have a few minutes to at least introduce that. You have something in your packet regarding the current fees. And I, do you want to describe the issue?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, basically, when we are zoning, our zoning fees, they really, there's really three different types of fees. I do certificates and declarations of compliance, there's a $50 fee, it goes into the till. The other types of fees relate to applications to the developer view board. And there's other fees that are for zoning permits. And what is silent in our fee structure is if a permit gets denied, what do we do with the money? Now, if it's an application fee, then you collect the money, you keep the fee, because it's an application fee. And therefore, they don't have a permit, but, you know, they paid their application fee. So, it's silent, it does say, you know, it says permit fee up top. And then, it speaks in the, in the text here about applications. Now, let me, obviously, if you notice, the next, I think I copied, I didn't copy Womack's bill underneath of it. Let me tell you, we recently, okay, sure. So, so this is what's prompted it. I'm not, I'm not hiding about this here. We had a, an application in front of us for Fisher Farm. And involved in that needed legal assistance from the city attorney to review the declarations for what started out to be thought to be a condominium that ended up being a planned community. And $800 worth of legal fees later, the DRB ended up denying the application. Now, the application fee, it was considered a major subdivision, $300 plus $100 per lot. And there was six lots at the time, so they paid a $900 fee. I paid $800 in legal expenses and $27.85 to the Addison Independent, not to count my postage time and some of my own time. So, I can tell you, I, I feel that in this instance, clearly, the application fee should be retained, all right? But, so, but how do we get this into a policy? So, I really feel that any application to the DRB, any application fee to the DRB, regardless of the outcome of that application, that that application fee be retained. Any zoning permit fee, on the other hand, if somebody applies for a garage and I deny the permit, I give them their, I give them their zoning permit fee back. So, applications to DR, DRB are kept regardless of the outcome. Zoning permits, on the other hand, if denied, the, that fee, that part of the fee is returned.
So, I could, we have- Just barely under the wire. Enough time to entertain a motion to clarify that policy as to how those fees will be handled. Does anybody want to make that motion?
Motion to have. Nature of permits.
I have a motion. That any application fee to the DRB, regardless of its outcome, will be kept. Zoning fees, if denied, is returned, for clarification.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion on that?
I'm sorry, Joe, what was the last line? It was just the last couple.
Okay.
That the zoning, if the zoning permit is denied, their fee is returned to them.
The fee applicable to the zoning permit is returned.
Okay. So, Lowell has made, made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second it. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions?
How much of your time goes into looking at a zoning? I mean, does it seem like only half should go back, because you're still doing something? Or is this a quick, takes two minutes and it's not really?
It varies, but I wouldn't worry about, I wouldn't get worried about that. There, there's no, you're not, you aren't making money on zoning. This is a moneymaker. It's really bound by the rules.
I didn't think so, I just wanted to verify.
If there's no other questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, we move on to public hearing. I'm opening the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Virgin City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 18, 2017, at 6:30 PM, we're 6:32, in the Virgin's Firehouse Meeting Room pursuant to 24 VSA Section 4385 for the following purpose, pursuant to 24 VSA Section 4384, the Planning Commission proposes to amend sections 1.3, 3.1, 3.2, 5.1, 5.2, the land use map, and the appendix of the municipal development plan. A copy of the full text of the proposed amendments and report is on file in the city clerk's office, dated June 28, 2017. So, I'll now open the hearing on the proposed amendments to the municipal plan. Is there anyone who would like to make any comments or suggest any changes?
Would you like a quick word on what those numbers mean in words? But not that we need to.
Well, the, the first hearing we had, Shannon went through all of them. So, unless the audience that we have here wants to hear that.
I won't risk it. Thank you, anyway.
No, so, so we don't have to do that. Did, did you want to?
Hi, Daryl.
Yeah.
I'd like to address the residential use in the central business district provision. I came in a couple of years ago and lobbied to have the regulation changed, and it was so adopted. But when I went to apply for the permit, it was denied. So, I'd like to come back to the city council and ask for their assistance in either changing the percentage to 30 or directing the DRB to apply the rules as written.
Well, I'm not sure we can direct the DRB to do anything. But as far as the possibility of a change, I'm not sure what section that is. I am familiar with it, because we had a lot of discussion over this issue.
Indeed.
And I guess it's a matter of whether the council feels that, that is deserving of a change. If there is a change to this, then we will have to have another public hearing, at least one. So, is everyone familiar enough with this, this whole issue?
What, what we're suggesting is that the language return, desires to return the language to the plan where new residential uses on the ground floor and the central business district are prohibited. That was our suggestion, to return the language to the original language prior to the last amendment.
And when the Planning Commission held their public hearing, they received input supportive of that change back to the original language.
Okay.
So, specifically, it's on page 96 of the municipal plan. And as Cheryl indicated, the current language in the plans, that, that sentence reads, "Residential uses are prohibited at the ground level," comma, "except where no portion of the residential use is at the front of the building and visible from the street." I will tell you that the Planning Commission took that language and drafted zoning regulations providing for residential use on the ground floor up to, I believe it's 20 or 25 percent. So, and so that's how that regulate, that regulation got created. And James is correct, he applied to the DRB, and he was denied under, on the basis that the DRB concluded in their findings that it, his proposal exceeded the square footage per the zoning regs. The Planning Commission is, is proposing to change the sentence that I read to simply read, "Residential uses are prohibited at the ground level," period.
So, what, what I'll do with this is that, we're in the hearing portion. So, all we're doing is taking comments and not doing anything at this point. So, if there are no other comments related to the plan amendments, then I'll close the hearing. Is there any other comments? Then I'll close the hearing, and we'll move to agenda item seven, oh, yeah, yes.
H.
Seven?
You needed to get this H done, anyway.
No, I'm going to come back to that. I'm going right, I'm going to go right to, to 7J, which amendments the municipal development plan. And I would need a motion to, to approve the municipal development plan as amended by the Planning Commission. And then, we can talk about whether, in fact, there will be any amendment to those amendments. So-
I will make a motion to approve the amendments to municipal plan.
Okay.
Seconded.
And it's been seconded. Moved and seconded to, to approve the municipal development plan as presented by the Planning Commission. So, now, discussion as to whether there want, there's going to be any amendment to that based on public comment.
So, what will this do to the zoning? If we have a zone that says 20 percent, does this then override that and remove that?
Not yet.
But it will?
The Planning Commission would then intern, there, the Planning Commission is already working on modification, amendments to the zoning regulations, and they would, they will get to this one. That's just not where they're, they're making their way through the entire document, working on various other items. And so, this will be discussed at their next meeting, will likely be discussed at their next meeting, which is on Monday.
I'll tell you what my opinion is on this, and it is somewhat changed from originally. Originally, when this came up and we had a lot of discussion on it, I was really, I, I really didn't know where to decide, actually. Because here I am, the president of the Virgin's Partnership, which represents the interests of downtown. And at the same time, wanting to be supportive of a local business, being able to, you know, sustain their building. I'm, I can't even remember what I voted. But at, at this point in time, I guess my position would be more towards the partnership end. And that is that we, we change the regulation. That would mean, I think, that would mean that since he's already applied and he's already done something with it, he can, he can go forward if he makes corrections to it and gets it passed by the DRB, can still do it under the old regulation, because a new regulation is not going to change it back. new regulation is not going to change it back. But I think we should, we should go with the planning board recommendation. And one of the reasons why I've changed my mind on that is because I've done some research in other downtowns and it is absolutely prohibited in other designated downtowns, most of them. And as a matter of fact, not only is that prohibited, but other kinds of uses. They don't allow office, offices to be on Main Street in a lot of the other designated downtowns. It is strictly for retail. And I guess I have to lean in that direction because I'm on an organization that that's what we stand for. That's what we're supposed to do. And so I think the planning board was correct in changing it. That's just my opinion.
I think at the time, I don't think I was in favor. I don't remember exactly how I ended up voting. But I always felt that the, our downtown is so small to begin with, that any, any space we lose for residents is hurting what could potentially be in Virgin's. I mean, with the exception of maybe where Luigi's is, our downtown is looking good. It's great. It's good to see people walking around. But the one thing that, you know, you have to address parking, there's, there's all kinds of things. And our downtown is so limited, especially where there's only one level, that it is, I think it is difficult to keep a retail business if there's no space. So.
I agree with you and Lynn both.
And I would just, I would just add that I think we're fortunate, you know, the partnership deals with a lot of businesses and trying to bring businesses in and make sure that all of our, all of our spaces are full. And we, fortunate or unfortunate, whichever way you want to look at it, we don't have enough space for the businesses that are asking to come to Virgin's. And-
Where are they? I've been advertising that space for three years and have yet to see a single applicant. I had one applicant in three years for that space. It's not a downtown, Main Street space.
It's a back alley space with no visibility and no parking.
It's prime residential, but it's not prime business space. That space subsidizes the front gallery, which is the retail space in the front. Without it, the rent has to go up and they're not going to be able to make it. So then I kick them out because they can't pay their rent and then it's vacant. I mean, I'm open to suggestions, but what do you want me to do with this space? It's not prime retail.
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry, which, which space exactly is it that you're asking?
210 Main Street.
It's where Harriet's Gallery-
Two subsidized residential spaces. It's not prime retail. It's not retail at all.
Used to be an office.
What am I, sort of correctly voted one way about a year ago and now we're going the other way? It's, seems we don't have a solid foundation. So, it's a precedent where we kind of flip flop our votes, whether I agree with it or not. The first time around, it was what we said we'd do and now we're going. It's not really, we have that much in the way of new information, not anything massively changed since the last time we did it.
But it's not going to change your 20 percent, right? That's how I understood.
I understand. You have to leave the space and it is still not approved because they don't actually count the residential use space. They're counting everything that's not office space, which I don't believe is the way you calculate space. If you have a square foot and you're standing in it, you don't count every other square foot you're not standing in. You're standing in it. You're standing in the space you're standing in.
So just so that everybody has your, has full knowledge here, James applied for a permit to change the use of the space that he's talking about from office or, from office use to residential. And the Development Review Board conducted a site visit. Based on the site business, James had already changed the use to residential. He's been, it was an apartment the last time that we were inside of it. So he's, he made that change without having a permit. That's just the facts. And the DRB concluded that, that the layout of the apartment, based on the math, it did not meet the 20 percent. Now, James can sit here and argue with the DRB until he's blue in the face. The fact of the matter is, is if he really feels that the DRB erred in their decision, he needed to appeal that to the environmental court. He doesn't come and complain to the city council. That's, you're not the, you're not, the city council is not the appeal board of the DRB. He should have brought that. If he thinks he's so right about this, then he should have done that within the 30 days of his decision. He didn't do that, all right? So he's faced with, he, currently, he's using a piece of property in violation of the zoning. He hasn't known, you know, I've sent James's letter. He knows I've sent him that notice of violation. And so that's how his property is sitting today.
It's actually vacant, sitting vacant, useless.
Okay.
Can't do anything with it.
Okay.
But if he, if he were to comply with the 20 percent somehow-
Yeah.
He could still do it.
He could make an application, yeah.
Because he's still under the old regulation, even if the new regulation changes. So it's a matter of whether compliance can be had. It's not, we're not taking that away, we're not taking the original granting away.
He didn't get granted anything, but the, the current, the current regulation is 20, is 20 percent. So if the, if the plan, if the language in the plan changes, it is true that between now and the time that the, that the regulations change, if they change, the DRB could entertain, will is required to entertain applications involving not more than 20 percent and act, and act on them if provided that the space of the residential use is not more than 20 percent of the, of the ground floor. But do, but if this gets approved by you, you know, do expect that the regulations, they'll be incorporated in the zoning regulation amendments. There'll be an incorporation eliminating that, that 20 percent and returning to the prohibition of that use on the ground level in the, in the central business district.
So, so are there any further comments from the council or questions? Because if I don't hear something, then I'm going to call for the vote. Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve the municipal plan amendments as presented by the Planning Commission. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed? Okay. That is done. We will now move back in the agenda to Business Five-
H.
H.
Yeah. So we need one of these-
And a certificate of no appeal or suit pending. And if we've got a clean copy, I don't think we need a motion. We just need to pass it around and sign it.
Yeah. We should get this form fixed, Joan, here, because I really think the listers sign at the left and there's five lines, and the city council signs at the right and there's five lines. So-
I printed it right off.
Is it, are we using Jones? Is Jones coming through?
They're all the same. Oh.
Yeah. So she's got one coming this way.
Okay.
All right. So while that's being signed, we'll move to item 5I, outside alcohol consumption permit, American Legion Post Number 14, for August 13th. And do we, do we need a motion?
I have the permit. They're asking for outside consumption permit for one day, August 13th, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And they already have an outside consumption permit to allow alcohol on their suspended deck in the air. This is to be used on the ground downstairs and basically involves an outside bar that will go, because they're going to rope off the area. This is for their family picnic they have once a year. They did the same thing last year. So it's, they, they understand the liquor laws, that it's all going to be roped off and it's for 100 feet by 200 foot area. And some of the upper parking and some lawn. So that area will encompass the parking lot and lawn. All their events will be outside of that seating area.
So is the motion for her to, to sign it or to approve it?
To, we, we need a motion to approve? Is that what we need?
Yeah.
I'll make said motion.
Okay. Motion's been made. Somebody second it, please? If there is a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been seconded. Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've got that.
You signed it, okay.
Yeah, I signed it. Okay, so we move on to city manager's report.
So I handed out to you a few things. First off, let me just tell you, I did not bother printing a FY 2018 because all that we've had is maybe two weeks of wages and a handful of bills in front of you, so I didn't bother. So what I handed out to you is a budget report as of June 30th. And the other form, the accompanying form is similar, is the same format, if you, if you will, that you reviewed when we were looking at setting the tax rate. And these numbers obviously will continue to move a little bit. I can tell you that, you know, there's a lot of bills that came in between your last meeting and today that were purchases and product delivered to us prior to June 30. And so all of those accounts payable, I have indicated, you know, anticipated accounts payable of $1,000 in all three funds. It could be zero. There may not, you may, there may not be another bill associated with an expense in the prior fiscal year, but I didn't want to just put zero because I never know, somebody pulls, you know, somebody, some contractor finds out that they forgot to bill us for something that they, that they did and we, we own that number. So, but I really do not expect much will change. I will tell you that the increase/decrease in deferred delinquent taxes, on earlier report, I mentioned to you that I suspected that our delinquent taxes would rise by $25,000 from where they were 60 days into the fiscal year, a year ago. And the number, if you look at, if you look at this report of delinquent taxes in the bottom left-hand column under principal, as of 4:57 today, the total in principle of delinquent taxes is $57,818.98. The, the amount of taxes on August 30th that were, had, that were not collected, the so-called deferred, meaning you can't count those delinquent taxes because they weren't collected within 60 days of your fiscal year, that number was $24,016 and some change, all right? So the point is, is that if we do not collect a dime between now and August 30th, our deferred taxes will go from $24,000 to $57,000 and it adversely affects your fund balance by $33,000. So every dollar that we collect in delinquent taxes from today going through to August 30th improves your fund balance, all right? I will also tell you that I really do not think that we've received our police fines, any police fines, Joan. We have not collected our police fine check. So there's actually some revenue that is coming that is in last year's that will obviously improve these numbers. So I will tell you that the other thing I did with this report was when you decided to go with a tax rate of 81 cents, what that did is it re, it reduced the amount of money you were taking out of your fund balance. And so, right today, it appears we're, we are using $73,500 in, of what I estimate to be around $148,000 fund balance. So, but again, these numbers, you know, they will continue to move, you know, as we get towards the, towards the end of, end of August. So I feel pretty good about that. The, the fire department fund, you know, obviously the floor is done upstairs, all those bills got paid and you can see that, that the fire fund is strong. There, I do suspect, I can tell there's no more surprises in revenue, all the contract payments have been made in full. So the only, the only amount that might change would be on the expense side. So I do project around a $28,000 fund balance, of which $10,000 has been used to offset our own share in the other three towns. And now to the sad news of the sewer fund. You can see that we're headed clearly in the wrong direction. I mean, there's, there's basically $8,000 of red ink that are, that's staring at you. You know, we're, we're using $18,000 of a fund balance to balance the sewer fund budget for FY 18 and, and we only have $10,000. So you, you absolutely have red ink. Jeff and I were doing a little bit of math before some of you came in and basically a 1 percent, if you think about, when you look at the revenue, the revenues, we collect about, our Joan bills out, about $650,000 a year. So, you know, a 1 percent increase in our rates, you know, generates $6,500, all right? So clearly, we're over, we're 1 percent is not enough. So I can tell you that it's not about if we need to have a rate increase, it's about when we want to have a, have a rate increase. And we talked a little bit about that at the last meeting and I just, Joan has already done the quarterly billing. So I think that you all need to seriously look at a schedule of discussing rates. I, I, I think that before Joan puts out the, the quarterly billing on October 15th, you should have had at least some discussion. I'm not saying that you had to, you had to have, I'm not saying that you should be adjusting the rates, but I'm, I am suggesting that you should have some discussion about rates because it's, this is not like wine. This is not going to improve with age.
But could, and maybe for the next meeting, or-
Maybe that's too soon. But could you have kind of a few scenarios for us? Like, you know, if the rate goes to this, it's going to be this much money and going to, goes to this, it's going to be this much, so that we kind of-
Yeah.
Have a better feel of, of where-
Yeah, I certainly, I can, yeah, obviously, Rennie, we, you know, you and I both inherited a sewer run in the hole.
Yes.
And, and we were able to get ourselves out of it. And so, you know, we're, you know, we're, we're not in the hole, all right? I'm not saying that, but we're, we're headed. That's where we're headed. So we definitely need to do something soon. So yeah, I can do that. And, and as I mentioned before, I sure wish we were out of debt just, just a little bit quicker than that chart shows. But I don't, I just don't see us, I just don't see us making it to that date. So, so I certainly can do that.
Let me ask one question. Is there some way to cooperate with the water district? I mean, obviously, if people aren't going to pay the sewer, sewer isn't something you can turn off because it flows easily. But if, if, if they are making no effort-
Yeah.
-at all to pay their sewer bill, could we cooperate with the water district and have the water turned off? Is that, is that a legal position?
Well, let me tell you the, you know, I, I don't know, but let me just tell you that unlike taxes, our auditors allow us to use 100% of our receivables as an asset. So it's not like our delinquents are moving the numbers at all. It's, it's not like you can solve this with collections because we're counting, we're counting the, the receivables as part of our fund balance already. So I'm, I'm sorry. That money, that receivable is already in here because it's based on bill, on billing.
I know, but you know, it's, this is my personal feeling. You get sick of paying your share that you pay on time-
Yeah.
-to the ones that have, that don't pay. And so everybody else has to pick up the extra because that is really a not a real number. It's a, it's, it's maybe an asset if you could ever- It's a, it's, it's maybe an asset if you could ever collect it, but if you can't collect it, it's not an asset.
Well, I, well, we're going to collect it because it's, it's a lean against the property. What I'm telling, what I'm telling you is, is that the delinquents, the delinquents, yeah, does, does it have something to do with their cash flow? Yes, but it does not change the fund balance at all because the accounts receivable, if it's thirty thousand dollars, it's not, unlike taxes, it's, it's not, they do not use the sixty-day rule on delinquent sewers. It's, it's used one hundred percent. So it doesn't do anything for us.
Okay, well, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've gone through all of our businesses, I, I think, and what's left is the mayor's report, however, I'm not going to make a mayor's. He gave me a few items, but given the time, I don't think anything is critical. There was fishing derby finances, I think we already got in the last report, or the last meeting. There was a meeting with Senator Sanders' staff that was attended by the mayor, the city manager, and, and I. And, but I'm not going to go through the details other than there was a meeting. And the mayor is having a, his first Cracker Barrel session at Armory Lane on July twenty-fifth at eleven fifteen. So I've vastly abbreviated all of the things on his list.
Yeah, the one thing I forgot to mention is, is that the sidewalk extension project, it, part of the grant agreement requirement is that once the preliminary plan has been completed, the city council is required to have a public informational meeting on that project. And as long as we're still on schedule, I know on my calendar, I think you're, you're meeting twice in August. So I just, as long as we are still on for August...
Eighth is the next?
Eighth. That would be your public informational meeting on that project. It's just part of the, part of the grant requirement.
Okay.
And one quick question about sidewalks. Is Vermont Gas repairing the sidewalks as they destroy them?
You know, that's a good question. I, I'm not so sure that I'm seeing that. I do not think I've seen a concrete truck in town yet, so I don't know, but I can, we can...
There are a few spots that have been repaired on King Street, at least, I watched them do that.
They port them? They port them? Okay, all right.
So I don't know about other places, but I do know.
Because I know some areas that aren't done. So, so I don't know that specific, but I'm glad to hear that they're not waiting until they've got them peppered throughout the entire city. They're, they're, they're hitting them.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Somebody second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rennie.
You're out of here, huh?
Yeah.